I call a meeting to order, the Planning Commission this fifth day of November 2018. Thank you for coming. Would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we call the roll?
Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Present.
Commissioner Dugan?
Present.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
Chair Bradley?
Here.
Thank you. Public comment session. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for their attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the October 15 meeting.
Chairman, just one point for staff on bottom of page four. I'm not sure how I did it, but apparently I both motioned and seconded. And so, does anyone recall actually either making the motion or seconding the design review, the approval?
I think it would be best to ask staff to review the tape on that and make the appropriate amendment.
I can't recall, so we'll have you re-
Certainly, staff will review the tape and make the correction as noted per the recording.
Thank you.
Good, good try, James. I noticed that, too. Thank you. With that, are there any other comments?
With that adjustment, I would move to approve the minutes as otherwise directed.
And I will second. Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to public hearing. Procedure for public hearings are the staff who will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. And when all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing, described in this notice. The public notice are in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door over in the corner and hand it to the recording secretary or any one of us prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should then come up to the microphone in the front here to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist the staff in preparing the minutes. We have five items to be considered tonight in this order. A proposed amendment to zoning ordinance for wireless telecommunications facilities, and that item will be continued at a later date, which is uncertain at this time. Also, 782 Elm Street, a design review and conditional use permit, vesting of a tentative map, and removal of a protected tree request. This item has also been continued to a date uncertain. And finally, next is 201 Industrial. Consideration of a design review approval for a freeway-oriented sign, wall-mounted and internally illuminated for Park Pharma. Next is consideration of an ordinance amending the development agreement between the City of San Carlos and the Palo Alto Medical Foundation for Health Care, Research, and Education, and developing of their property at 301 Industrial Road and to extend the vesting period for some 10 years. And finally, last is a study session on retail establishments selling firearms and ammunition as defined in the San Carlos Municipal Code. So we'll start out. Do we need to move to continue?
I checked with the city attorney, yes, through the chair, and there is no motion necessary for items A and B because they have been put here on the agenda as to be continued to a date uncertain. So we will be issuing public notice for both of these items once they're ready to go. So we can start with item C as the commission is ready.
Thank you. That saves some time and also clears up the question. Thank you. So we'll begin then with 201 Industrial Park. Consideration of design review for a freeway-oriented sign. And we have a staff presentation. Rebecca.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Rebecca Weisong, planning technician. This evening I will be presenting a request for design review for a wall sign for Lake Pharma. So per San Carlos Municipal Code, any sign that is visible from Highway 101 or above 25 feet at the bottom of the sign requires planning commission approval. This site is located between Harper Boulevard and Holly Street, as well as between Industrial and Highway 101. The location of the sign is east-facing along the facade of the building. As you can see, it's the "A" annotated on the map. This site is allocated 240 square feet of signage per ordinance 312 that governs the site. It is part of a planned development. So the applicant proposes to add 115.5 square feet of freeway-oriented signage that will read "Lake Pharma." The words are "five-inch-deep internally illuminated," acrylic letters painted blue with a orange line below. The letters are four feet, six inches tall, and 25 feet, eight inches wide. The previous sign at this location was similar size, and at the same location on the building was also approved by planning commission. This application was notified to owners within 300 feet radius of this site, and we received no comments. And this is the motion you would make should you choose to approve this application. Representatives from Arrow Sign Company are here to answer any questions. I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. Anyone in the commission wish to question staff? The applicant here wish to make a presentation? Seeing none, let's have discussion among the commission.
Did we want to have public comment on this?
Yes. Oh, thank you. I said just the applicant. Now let's have public comment. Anyone here supporting or opposing the request? Seeing none, we'll keep moving ahead.
I just had a brief question. Is the illumination the same as the previous sign?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay. In the design, do the two red boxes as part of the logo, do they account for, are they included in the square footage?
No, because they're not part of the actual signage.
I believe they're accents on the building design. Is that correct, Rebecca?
They're part of the building.
Thank you.
No one representing the applicant, huh?
This one there.
Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Tom Salmon from Arrow Sign Company.
Good evening.
Let's see. So we were the original manufacturer of the Nugent sign that was removed a number of weeks ago. We worked with Lake Pharma closely on the design of this sign. It's like Rebecca had described. It's internally illuminated with LED facelit channel letters. Pretty straightforward. The square footage is about the same size as the sign that was removed. I think the drawings speak themselves, and I think Rebecca did a very nice job of presenting it.
Any, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, for the discussion, I think that since it's a pretty much even swap for what was there before, there's not much impact, and so I wouldn't have any problem voting yes.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I move that the planning commission approve the request for design review approval of approximately 115.5 square feet of signage for Lake Pharma at 201 Industrial based on required findings and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report.
Through the chair, before you, before anyone seconds that motion, we have not closed the public hearing. I'd just like the record to reflect that the public hearing's been closed before the main motion. So if you could make that motion first, that would-
Thank you, Ms. Druhman. Anyone-
Will the public hearing be closed?
Second. Now we'll-
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to say this again?
Please.
Okay. I move that the planning commission approve the request for design review approval of approximately 115.5 square feet of signage for Lake Pharma at 201 Industrial based on the required findings and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone wishes to challenge our vote or any, any comments, you have 10 days to, to do that. So that would make it on the 15th of November, which is a Thursday. By 5:00, close of business. Limited to 10 days. Thank you. We'll move on then to consideration of the ordinance amending the development agreement between San Carlos and PAMP. That's Palo Alto Medical Foundation, Health Care, Research, Education. It's really a clinic, isn't it? And development at 301 Industrial Road, the extension of the vesting period of 10 years. Lisa, staff has a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Lisa Costa-Sanders, principal planner. The item before you at 301 Industrial is consideration of an ordinance. Development agreements are adopted by ordinance. So this will be a recommendation to the city council. The Palo Alto Medical Foundation, or known as PAMP, development at 301 Industrial Road was approved in 2007. The project includes a medical office building that's already been completed, a hospital building which has yet to be constructed of about 220,000 square feet, onsite parking with over 1,200 parking spaces that's built within a garage, as well as surface parking. That aspect has also been completed. Landscaping improvements, pedestrian improvements, as well as a new traffic, inner traffic signal, and those improvements as well has been completed. The development agreement that was adopted as a part of the project also included different funding commitments, and those were summarized in your staff report. Many of those are ongoing, but some of those have also been completed. Very briefly to give you an overview of the site, you see the building in the front there is the clinic, building number three. That's been completed. The hospital building to the rear closer to Highway 101 has yet to be developed, and then the parking garage has also been completed. And you also notice the landscaping and the driveway improvements at the front have been constructed. The development agreement included a 10-year vesting period. That means that the project entitlements are affected for a period of 10 years, the development rights for the project. Those expired at the end of 2017. The PAMP has completed a portion of the project, as I indicated, the medical office building, parking garage site improvements, but they have not yet reconstructed the hospital building. They are requesting a 10-year extension of the term of the vesting rights as outlined in the development agreement to allow for the completion of the project. In exchange for this 10-year extension of the vesting rights, PAMP has agreed to the following. One would be to pre-fund the city a portion of the commercial linkage fee. That's the affordable housing fee that the city has recently adopted, in the amount of $2 million, within 14 days of the amendment being finalized. The remaining fee of about $2.5 million would be paid at the time of building permit issuance, and there's a provision in the development agreement that a portion of that fee has been frozen at the current rate of $20 per square foot, but the remaining of the fee would be calculated based on the fee amount that was in place at the time of building permit issuance. That freezing of the fee is only in place for a six-year period. PAMP will also make a contribution of $500,000 towards the U.S. Hollywood Pedestrian Bridge Project. So this initial contribution from PAMP to the city for the execution of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement is $2.45 million. The city council certified the final environmental impact report for the project in October of 2007. This amendment to the Development Agreement would not result in any substantial changes that would require any revisions to the EIR, no new significant environmental impacts or substantial increase of the severity of previously identified impacts. There's no new information as well that would change the effects. The project does remain consistent with the general plan as well as the zoning. Staff did send out the required 300-foot public notification, as well as published it in the newspaper, and we have received no comments regarding this project. Here's the motion should you choose to make it. As I indicated, it would be a recommendation to the city council. This does take action by the council as it is an ordinance. And this evening we do have representatives from Sutter Health, Palo Alto Medical Foundation. Jennifer Turnbull could respond to any questions that you have on behalf of the applicant team.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
The six-year freeze, is that a, something that was built into the original agreement? Or is that something that-
It's something that has since been negotiated. Yes. And as I indicated, it's just for a portion of the fee, so that they would have some predictability.
And to provide some context for how this proposed agreement was come up with, I suppose, when they're asking for this time extension, there's some value to obtaining that.
Correct.
And so the city came up with what the staff considered a commensurate amount of benefit.
Correct. Yes.
I was just trying to get a sense of the, so we had the original agreement with certain fees agreed upon.
Yes.
But the project wasn't completed. So, you know, is that proportional? Like, what was the total amount of fees and how much of that has been paid to date? Is that readily available?
I don't believe I have the summary. I think the applicant may have that information readily available.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff before we have the applicant?
As far as the environmental impact report and the impact, I guess it's the original plan for the hospitals. So the scale of the development is unchanged.
Correct.
But the larger context of the, of the development in the area has changed quite a bit over 10 years.
Right.
And so congestion and pollution and the like is a moving target. And so would it be sort of within the bounds to take into consideration the changes in the context as far as if we're-
Sure. So when environmental impact reports are prepared, there is a cumulative analysis that takes place, and that takes a look at the development potential under the general plan that could occur in San Carlos. And so for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation EIR, it did take that cumulative look to see about those projects. And so all projects that have been developed have been developed under that general plan scenario. As well, anything that's since been developed since the EIR was approved, any mitigations identified for those projects have since been mitigated and implemented. So there isn't anything that's new or different than what was anticipated with the PAMP EIR.
What about the ability of, of patients and staff to get from public transportation to the facility? It seems like something that maybe, may have changed over 10 years or in 10 years going forward in terms of what public transportation is available for that. Has, has that changed? Or do we need to, I'm wondering whether it might be appropriate to somehow beef up the ability of patients and staff to get to the facility via public transportation, given, given the challenges that are facing the city?
Right. The availability and the transportation, public transportation services have, have not changed. However, the city does have a commuter shuttle that it works with and operates. It helps fund through some contributions from some businesses, and it does go by that location as a shuttle stop. So that has been added as an improvement.
Okay, that's interesting. I might, I might ask the PMF people about the usage of that and-
Yeah, I think at this time it's unfortunately low. We're trying to get the usage up a little bit higher, but they may be able to expand on that.
Lisa, a couple, a couple questions if you don't mind. The, so let me, let me make sure I understand the, of the $2.4 million for the commercial linkage payment, 500 would be fixed at this $20 per square foot rate?
Correct.
That means that $1.9 million would float to then whatever the, the then rate is.
That's right.
How has that rate changed over time? In other words, if we look back 10 years, what would that $20 have been?
Yeah, the fee was actually just adopted, I believe, last year. So it's a new fee to the city.
And, and does it have like any natural escalation to it? Or how do we think about what it might be?
The city does fee studies every couple of years. So we have a consultant come in and look at the market. And so they would look at our, it's called a commercial linkage fee, and they would say, okay, you know, in two years, you know, where would it be in the marketplace? And a lot of times you'll look at like the CPI or some, you know, other escalator in the market. That's, that's common to other cities. Do you want to say something?
Well, there, there is an issue with fees. They have to be, there has to be a neck that's otherwise called a nexus study. So the fee has to have a nexus to the impact of the, of the commercial project. So the fee study that we have now developed a, a nexus to the impacts of developments and created the fee. So every so often, we look at the fee and adjust it to take into account the impact of developments escalating prices and costs of housing, et cetera. And in the, between the studies, it's very common to do what Al was suggesting, and that is to put an escalator in the fee, and the council can do a cost of living escalator when they update the fee study until we have, until it's time to do another one, because you don't have to do them every year. You just do them periodically to validate your fees.
Good. Thank you. And so let's presume that we make a recommendation, council approves this. Does this prevent the city from doing a similar deal with any of the other hospital groups? Is there anything exclusive in this relationship, number one? And then maybe more to the point, what are the, what does this block? I mean, is there any issue? It's like buying an option. So, you know, the, the medical foundation has decided they wanted to pay some money up for, for an option. Could we get the cash? Could they get 10 years? What don't we get? What doesn't the city get, if anything, in the way of development opportunity?
I'm not sure there's anything that we don't get because the, the building was entitled initially on that site. So we're not going to see a different kind of a building unless PAMP wants to come in and change that approval. And so that's what they would need to do. They would, they're trying to just extend the entitlements, the permits that they already got. So that ended. Same buildings. They haven't built the hospital yet. And, and so for that particular, I can't think of anything off-site that we wouldn't get as part of this, this entitlement that you're giving tonight. So it would have to be something on that particular site. It would have to be a reduction or an increase of the development potential of that site that they would want to do. They would have to come to the city and present that.
Okay, thanks. And last, if I could. Why 10 years? Why not five? Why not three? What, what was the dialogue that led us to 10?
Well, from what I understand from PAMP, market forces change, and so it's a, it's a major corporation, Sutter Health is the, the parent corporation. And what I understand is that state law required hospitals in California to upgrade for seismic standards. And so many of the hospitals have been working on those major, very complex and expensive construction projects over the last, you know, eight or 10 years. And they're completing some of those projects, but as you can imagine, sometimes they take longer, funding sources come and go, and, and, and so, and the market changes. So I think what they're looking for is long-term. They're looking for some certainty that they will be able to build what they want to build. And I think that there may be a near-term horizon for the construction of the hospital that they're thinking of. But again, I think that depends on their, on what's happening with Sutter Health and, and PAMP and some of the other projects that, that they are working on. So we may want to ask that particular question to them. So generally, that's what I understand it to be.
Good. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Lisa.
I have one question. The, I think it's the $2 million that's going toward affordable housing. Is it in new fees or fee in new fees? I can't always get them mixed up. Is that something on top of the original agreement with PAMP, or is that just part of the original agreement with PAMP?
It's in addition to. We didn't have that fee in place at the time the development was approved. So it's, it's an in addition.
That's really nice to see. Thank you.
A follow-on question for that. If they decide not to build the hospital and they've already paid the city $2 million, then does the city need to give that back?
No.
Unrefundable. Okay.
As well as the $500,000 for the bridge.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Is the applicant here and wishes to speak?
Hi.
Terrific. Yeah, if you could approach the microphone.
Sure to introduce myself. I'm Jennifer Turnbull, and I'm responsible for Facility and Property Services here. And I've been a long-term employee of Palo Alto Medical Foundation, so I have a long-term association with this project. So happy to be here. Thank you.
Terrific. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. First, I mean, it's a beautiful campus. I'd imagine, though, that a lot of people who sat in this room in 2007 would have thought a hospital would have been built by now. And just for the benefit of, of San Carlos, if you wouldn't mind just giving a brief history of, you know, perhaps why that didn't happen by now, you know, the question of why this should be a 10-year option is, you know, interesting, and what is kind of the internal expectation in your organization on when and what that roadmap looks like for us having a new hospital in town?
Absolutely. As has been said before, we were completely approved in 2007, and the regulatory processes even then for building a hospital in the state of California are complex and lengthy. And so we were just approved to build the hospital and ground break at the time that their economic downturn happened. And so within our company, there was a capital freeze, and we had only broken ground on the clinic. So we proceeded with the clinic and put the hospital on, on hold, even though it's a very high priority for our company and continues to be. I think the time horizon for now, as we've talked a bit with the city about, Sutter Health has several large projects, some of you have, may have heard about in San Francisco. The largest one, which is a $2.5 billion project, is completing in 2019. So on the priority list for our company is this project with several others. So we look forward to relaunching the approval process and, and working our way through that regulatory process in the state of California. That said, there will be competing priorities. And so as Al said, we expect and hope to do this in the next five, but wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to do it for 10. And we're really happy to contribute to the affordable housing initiatives here. It's a community we feel very close to.
Okay. Now, thank you for that overview. And then perhaps you have the detail as far as, of the initial development agreement, the fees agreed to at that time, how much of which have been paid at this point. I understand the in-lu fee is incremental to that, but it would just be helpful for me to kind of understand that fee history.
Absolutely. So the original development agreement overall was $11 million and $9 million in a designated endowment fund, and we continue to supplement that to make sure that the returns are as expected. There was also a one-time payment to, for athletic facilities of $1 million, and then we also contributed to the San Carlos Education Foundation, 1.5 million. So all of those payments were done immediately after our initial approvals and happy to do so.
And I'm sorry, what, what is the endowment fund and, and like, how does, how is that administered and what is it for?
It's, so Al can probably help me with exactly how that's administered. We both had to double-check that. But we put funds into an endowment fund for the city of, of San Carlos, and it's managed by Silicon Valley Leadership Group, I think that's right, along with Community Foundation, thank you, to make, to make sure it maintains the returns as expected over the many years of that investment. And those, and those funds are available to the city of San Carlos for the use as determined by the city. And I don't know that there have been, maybe there was one. In other words, they are there and available, but I'm trying to remember, I think there was one project that they were used on for the, for the city since that time, but there...
So it is, it's a city-controlled fund for our general use?
Yes.
Interesting. Do we happen to know the size of that today?
Not off the top of my head. We'd have to go back and look.
Not off the top of my head either, sorry.
Al, is that the principal that's available or the returns that are available?
I believe both.
Yeah?
Yeah.
But we can get back to that. We did research that. I also didn't talk briefly about, we have an operational use tax that we pay on, on a annual basis, usually around $152,000 a year. And if it doesn't meet that threshold, we pay that. And then there will be, there was during the construction of the medical office building, a construction-related use tax for all of the purchases made to construct the building that we made sure that were attributed to San Carlos, and we'll do that again for the hospital project.
When reading this over, I did notice, what, what year did you open the doors of...
We opened the doors in 2014.
14.
2014, the end of the year. It's, yeah, about now, in 2014.
I've been there a number of times and have always gotten great service. And I noticed over the years that the traffic going through there has got, not traffic is in cars, but, but traffic in the facility is, is up, so.
Yeah, we're very, yeah, it's a lovely facility. Thank you for that.
PAMP is certainly a great asset to San Carlos, we appreciate it. I retired from Al Camino Hospital, and I've been a patient at PAMP for about 30 years. In fact, I'll have back surgery at 5:00 in the morning, but at Sequoia.
Yeah, but we also work there.
You don't have a OR. Well, the doctor is from PAMP, yeah. So I'm sort of looking forward to it, but I'm not sure.
I have some questions regarding the, the impact on traffic going forward, because that's sort of on the minds of a lot of our residents. And can you give me a scale of how many employee and patient trips the facility generates per day? Is that our, you know, some...
I don't think we've done a traffic study since we've been open, looking at my colleague. Total employees today are about, I'm looking at the numbers, a little over 500, which, and it would increase to about 950 employees and physicians on the site of the hospital were built. And we did, you know, I think we're tracking to the, the number of forecast trips today, so I wouldn't expect it to be beyond what we were approved for previously. We also, we talked about the shuttle, and we do fund that every year. I think that didn't come up, but we're a robust partner in the shuttle service. And we do have also a traffic demand management program in place to encourage our employees to use transit and also to get to downtown San Carlos. That was really a lot of the impetus for that shuttle funding.
Do you know how much the shuttle funding is?
$9,000 this year. Nine, yeah, $9,000 this year.
And is there any tracking of the usage of that shuttle?
There is, and I can get that back, but I don't have it with me today.
Because the position on the highway makes it very nicely, nicely situated for people who are commuting on Highway 101, and that, that keeps the traffic impact out of the local part of San Carlos, so that's good. But it's something that may have evolved since the original agreement is the, is an increasing necessity for the public transportation option. And I'm a little concerned that the existing shuttle setup isn't providing a meaningful mitigation or a meaningful opportunity for, for people to commute to the hospital via public transportation. I'm just wondering if that's something that could be worked on a little bit more.
Well, I, two things. I would say that I, I appreciate that on the peninsula at large, because I think we're not as good of using public transportation on the peninsula as, as perhaps some of our more urban neighbors. So we do have a very robust education program at PAMP around traffic demand management and the importance of using public transit. And that said, the options are a little limited, but I do know that people take the train and then the shuttle in. And so I know I stressed the ability for our employees to get downtown, which I think we thought and still think is really important for that connection to the community. But also, we do stress the importance of taking the mass transit. So it's not that we, I mean, again, and I think we have a whole matrix that can tell you, and we'll make sure that you get that to tell you how committed we are to the demand management for the traffic.
We're doing improvements to the Holly Street exit. That's part of what you paid into.
We did pay into that. It hasn't happened yet.
It hasn't been built yet.
We have contributed to that, yeah.
Okay.
That was part of the original. Thank you.
I think it would be nice to get on the table for, maybe the consumers of this would be the city council who will be passing this onward towards. But if, if we could under, if we and the city council could understand the volume of people who are using the shuttle for the PMAF and the frequency, so we can kind of gauge, gauge just how effective that is. Because I know at some of the other regional hospitals, there's a very frequent shuttle service, and, and that encourages its use. And I'm not sure whether that's really the case in San Carlos yet.
Certainly prepare that.
You can't bring that to us tonight, but if we could get that on the table, then, then I'm hoping the city council might be interested to hear that as well.
Yes, and through the chair, staff would also like to let the commission know that through our transportation demand management program, there is a monitoring requirement. So the way that it's set up is that, you know, they, the PAMP just opened in 2014, so it takes a while to start collecting the data and see how people are using the different transportation demand management measures that were put into place when the project was approved, including any provisions for subsidizing transit or promoting transit. So next year will be the five-year mark that, already 2019. So staff will be coming back to present as part of the transportation demand management program. So we provide updates to the city, to the planning commission, to see how well those are doing. And it's part of the overall monitoring program. And if there's opportunities to adjust something or look at other opportunities to, you know, perhaps change the program, we evaluate it at that time. So this is for every project that has an approved transportation demand management program as part of its approval.
It's tied to the life of the project?
Correct.
Okay.
Another thing that's happened over the last 10 years is electric cars are becoming more and more popular. I drive one myself. It's very nice. Do you have electric car charging stations there?
We do not yet, but we will. Yeah, again, 10 years ago, we didn't. We do have, I was, when I was driving in, I was reminded that we do have solar panels on the top of the garage, which, again, we use for heating of the water, actually, is back 10 years ago. If you think about how far we've come in these alternative energy sources, but they heat the water in large measure at the campus. So, yeah, we would plan to do that. That's part of most Sutter projects.
It, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners with their statements that this is a very valuable asset for San Carlos, and it's to be nurtured. And I, I think we have to rely on the city that they've struck a good balance between the value that's being obtained and given as far as the extension and the, and the financial costs. But the practicalities of the transportation seems like that's something that us as non-financial commissioners can, could potentially weigh in on. And it, and it seems like this is a, a point where the city has an opportunity to provide input or, and, and make requests that we might not have next year after this thing is signed off on. So if we wanted to make any boosts in this regard, you know, this might be the time to do it.
All right, thank you.
I think they can do that when they review the TDM next year. If it doesn't, if their TDM doesn't meet the requirements, they, the city does have recourse. I think that that's one, I don't, there might be other ways, but I think that's one way that they monitor the traffic. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
All right, thank you. We'll move on for public comment. Anyone here to support or oppose this proposal? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion amongst...
Why don't we close the public comment? We didn't do that last time till later, are we? Yeah, okay. I move we close the public comment.
Second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Acapone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes. Well, I will move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council, San Carlos, introduce an ordinance to amend the development agreement between the city of San Carlos and Palo Alto Medical Foundation for health care, research, and education relating to the development of property at 301 Industrial Road in the city of San Carlos to extend the vesting period for 10 more years.
Before I bring, I second it, I wanted to see whether there was any sentiment among other commissioners to add in some words about assessing or beefing up the, the traffic impact. I could be convinced that, I could be educated that this is out of scope for the planning commission, and we shouldn't worry about that, but...
What do you have in mind? Do you have an idea of what you think would be reasonable that's...
Um...
I mean, I'm open to it, but if it, if it...
I mean, I think assessing, making, ensuring that the shuttle service is actually effective in terms of the frequency and availability might be a, a good way. I mean, if there's a, if you know when you hop off the train, the shuttle is going to be waiting, and you can instantly get to work on time, it's going to be used. If, if, if it requires a half an hour wait at the train station for the next shuttle, then I'm probably not going to use it. So it's, so something about ensuring that the shuttle is actually an effective device seems like a...
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm not opposed to exploring something like that, but I would just point out that, you know, they've paid $11 million upfront on this project and only built half of it. And as they've come back around, there's a new $2 million fee we've assessed, and apparently we have a $9 million endowment that might be available for such measures. I would just point out that this is a firm asset for the community, and, you know, a lot of economics have already gone into this. So, you know, I, I would want to understand the specific impact of any additional requirements on them, I suppose.
Through the chair, I just want to add that this isn't really your typical development project application, because what's before you is a, is a proposed ordinance to approve or to recommend approval by the council of a development agreement that's been negotiated. So that would probably be a change in the negotiated terms of a development agreement. But I don't think it's without your purview to ask for information about the program. It's just not something that's before you tonight to, to change that aspect of the, of the project, because it's not part of what was negotiated.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Acapone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing this go to council and a hospital.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the hospital.
Yes. And again, there's a 10-day appeal period if anyone...
This one's a little different. It goes just, it's going to the council anyway, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rubens.
And please take good care of our chairman.
Yes.
And his surgery, please.
Yes. So we'll move on to the last item on the agenda. Study session on retail establishments selling ammunition, firearms in our San Carlos Municipal And do we have a presentation?
We do. Good evening, Chair, and members of the planning commission. I'll be providing you with a brief presentation about this evening's study session. And before I begin, I'd like to make a couple of introductions. We have Peter Pierce, our special legal counsel for this issue, and he will talk to a slide at the, near the end of the presentation, and, and also be available to provide background and answer questions of the, of the planning commission. And of course, Greg Rubens, our city attorney, can add as well. So in terms of... So in terms of background, the reason that we're here this evening is the city received a request from Turner's Outdoorsman, which is a sporting goods retail store that also sells firearms, and they wanted to open a retail firearm establishment in the city of San Carlos. And at that time, when their application was in, the city got a number of concerns from our community members. And in November 2017, the city council, after considering this application, adopted a moratorium on the, on retail establishments selling firearms and ammunition in our community to allow time for the community to study its options with regard to retail firearms and ammunition sales. And since then, the city has conducted two community engagement meetings to talk about the issue and listen to community concerns. Tonight, what we're anticipating from the planning commission is to hear from the community, consider some options from staff and legal counsel on regulating retail establishments selling firearms and ammunition, and also for the planning commission, after you've discussed this, to provide us some direction to assist in the preparation of any regulations that you feel are good for the community moving forward. Now, in terms of our current regulations, what I'd like to do is lay out the situation and why we are here today from a regulatory standpoint. And so the city has zoning regulations for new businesses. And when somebody comes into the counter, we, one of the, if they say, oh, can I go here or there in the community, we look at our zoning code and we have a map, and we look at the map and find out where they're located on the zoning map. And so there's a couple of different kinds of uses, and some uses are permitted. And what that means is, for instance, in a retail scenario, it's a business selling retail goods that is allowed to go in without a special discretionary review by the planning commission or the zoning administrator, and they can just go ahead and get a permit or get a business registration or a signed permit. Maybe there's staff review or a tenant improvement or not. If they're a permitted use, they could just enter into the new building if they're a permitted use. A conditional use permit, on the other hand, is something that is a higher level of review by the city, and this requires a public hearing before the planning commission, and the city can impose reasonable conditions on the business operations. For instance, to give you an example, if it was a nightclub or something that wanted to have live music in the downtown near a residential neighborhood, the planning commission could say, well, you can only do that until 10 o'clock at night, Monday through Friday, maybe go to 11 on Saturday. Those are the things like business operations, public health and safety issues, nuisance issues. You can regulate those with a conditional use permit. So currently, firearm retail stores are considered permitted uses, and they're allowed anywhere a retail store is allowed in our, on our zoning map. And I'll show you where that is in just a moment. And currently, the moratorium is in place so that those won't be going in until the city figures out how it wants to approach them moving forward. So right now, you can't, you're not permitted to go wherever you want if you want to sell firearms or ammunition in our community. Now, in terms of our zoning maps, so this is our zoning map to the right of your screen there, and as in many communities, the retail areas in our town emanated from a transportation hub, and that started back in the late 1800s with our train station. And as it is in many communities, you deliver goods, you deliver labor from the major transportation hub, and in the, in the old days, it was, it was the trains. And so we had our train station, and if you look at some old photos of San Carlos, you'll see people and businesses in and around supporting the train station. And we grew from there, from a retail standpoint. We grew down Laurel Street, San Carlos Avenue, and then El Camino Real. And so these colored areas, these purple and reddish areas along El Camino Real are, you can see a natural spreading out of these retail areas here. And then later, after World War II, when we got the highway in, you will see that some of these other areas along Industrial Road where we had industry and commercial businesses springing up, and then Highway 101, another access point for people coming and going from our community, and that's where a lot of the retail operations popped up. So this map shows you the areas in our community where retail is permitted, and there's lists of uses that are permitted, that the community has decided are okay to go in to these yellow areas and these retail areas by right or with very light review by the city. And I wanted to show you those areas in the community. So again, along El Camino Real, in our downtown, along Laurel Street, and then down Britton and along the freeway. So these are, again, those areas that were, that were accessible to cars and trains and people. So what are some of the options for San Carlos to regulate retail establishments? One option would be to adopt an ordinance or regulations to limit the location of new firearm retail establishments. We could also require a conditional use permit. Again, that's not something that is required for this particular use at this time for any new firearm establishment. And/or you could require a discretionary law enforcement permit issued by the police chief, and I believe Peter will be talking about that in just a moment. In terms of the location limitations, the city can also regulate the location of these retail establishments. For example, most recently, we considered cannabis as a new use in our community, and we said that we will allow them to go in particular locations of our community as long as there are a certain distance for more sensitive uses like a residence, residential area, or a school. Same thing, many years ago, we instated a adult entertainment use area, and those are limited to 1,000 feet from a residence or a school. So those are some of the locational regulations that you can put in place. And for instance, this map on the left shows the cannabis area, and this is the buffer zone around our residential areas and schools. And so you can see these yellow areas are the areas where the cannabis would be permitted with a conditional use permit. And then adult-oriented business, a much more limited area, just to give you some examples. So a conditional use permit, it could require, we could, as a community, require a conditional use permit, and again, those normally go to the planning commission for consideration with a public hearing, so the public can make comment at those meetings. And you can impose, again, reasonable conditions to regulate the use, and you can put that in your particular conditions for that particular use as part of requiring a conditional use permit. And Peter, Mr. Pierce will talk to this slide about discretionary law enforcement permit.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, commissioners. I'm Peter Pierce. I'm a partner in the law firm of Richards, Watson &amp; Gershon in San Francisco, and I've been retained to advise the city on sort of the scope of local authority and firearms matters. So as Al was just saying, in addition to a conditional use permit, the city, under its constitutional police power, can also require what I've called a discretionary law enforcement permit, and it would be issued by the police chief. This is within the city's authority because of its constitutional police power. Under state law, the city has the ability to regulate in all areas that are not preempted by the state, and state firearms law leaves open the ability of local agencies to require certain safety measures, and that's within the confines of the discretionary law enforcement permit. So if the planning commission saw fit, it could require an applicant for a discretionary law enforcement permit from the chief of police, and it could require that that applicant obtain all licenses and permits that are required by federal, state, and local law before considering a conditional use permit application. So before a would-be retailer came to this commission for a conditional use permit application from a zoning perspective, you could require them to obtain a discretionary law enforcement permit as a prerequisite to that.
Can you, I'm sorry, don't interrupt, but it says background checks. Are the, I mean, anyone can pull a background check, but what kind of background check are we talking in? What kind of things if they have on their record, does it matter? And then does that apply to any employee after an establishment is built?
Yes, okay. It would apply to not only the applicant, but to all proposed employees, so each employee would be subject to a background check. State law would require a background check in any event by the Department of Justice. The background check would be conducted by the California Department of Justice, but the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, the police chief, if you will, could require a separate background check. And what you would be looking for is any criminal history involving the applicant and in any criminal history for any employee. You could get much more in the weeds than that. You could, you know, you can disqualify an applicant on any number of grounds, not only if they've been convicted of a crime, but if they've ever had a similar license revoked in any other jurisdiction, or if they've had a similar license application denied in any other jurisdiction. That could be a ground for disqualification, obviously if they make a misrepresentation on the application in any regard. So there are many grounds. I've sort of gotten into the, into the micro level. In the staff report, you can see all the different types of regulations that are sort of available for you to consider. What I did in preparation for tonight and in preparation for completing the staff report is I not only canvassed state law to identify the areas that are sort of left open, and it's sort of an open-ended exercise for local agencies to regulate from a safety perspective, but I also looked at some of the regulations adopted by surrounding jurisdictions, the county of Alameda, the city of Oakland, the city and county of San Francisco, and the city of Sunnyvale, just to name a few. And what I did on this slide was they're broken down into sort of five broad categories. One is personal information about the applicant and employees. The other is Vice Chair Bergman just alluded to, our background checks. The third is the operational aspects of the business. What is the business going to look like? What are the safety measures that can be imposed on the business to minimize the chance of theft of a firearm or ammunition? The fourth one is limitations on persons entering the business premises. You certainly wouldn't want minors entering the business. That would be potentially a violation of state law. And then grounds for denying an application for a law enforcement permit. So I thought just to leave this slide general, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one more question, because I don't see it on here or anything that's been said. Right now, we have, I believe, two guns and ammunition shops. Do we have any purview to say there's only a limit of any two at any given time? Because right now, there's a moratorium, but is it within a, is that within a recommendation that we can make that we only have so many in the city at any given time? Is that something that's possible?
That would not be preempted by California law. The only, the only potential problem with that, and I say potential because case law's still evolving under the Second Amendment, but as I'm sure all of you are aware of, there's a Second Amendment right to possess a weapon for self-defense, certainly in the home, and courts seem to be moving towards saying in public as well. I think you would probably be safe if you allowed just two firearms retail establishments in the city. The caveat to that is would be so long as they sell firearms that, you know, that people would want access to handguns and other weapons. So that my answer to that is sort of a qualified yes, without knowing sort of the context.
Got you. Thank you.
I would just ask, you know, the conditional use permit regime is something we're familiar with and understand. Discretionary law enforcement permits, something brand new, and perhaps you just coined the name for them.
That actually comes from others.
Oh, is that right? Okay, okay.
Other jurisdictions have called it a discretionary law enforcement.
And that's actually specifically my question. If you could just place us on the map here, you know, is this adopted in many communities around California? Is it adopted, you know, in any communities close to us? Like, where are we on the map considering a discretionary law enforcement permit?
Well, all of the jurisdictions I just mentioned in the Bay Area, the county of Alameda, the city of Oakland, the city and county of San Francisco, and the city of Sunnyvale have some form of this type of discretionary permit. And there are, I believe, at least a dozen jurisdictions in California that require something akin to this. I don't know the exact number, but I do know there are about a dozen.
Okay. And then I noticed the many aspects to it detailed further in the staff report and summarized in your slide. As you've experienced these in other communities, is it, you know, is this a superset of all of them? Do most of them contain most of this? How do we go about realizing what is, you know, typical or expected here?
This is a superset. I tried to make this as absolutely comprehensive as possible so you all knew the full menu of choices that you had at your disposal. There are some cities that have most of these. I don't recall, instantaneous recall, whether any city has all of them. I think the city and county of San Francisco has a fairly comprehensive regulation.
Got it. And then as we're grappling with this, does staff have a process in mind on how you're going to think through these, which ones we should apply, which ones we shouldn't apply? Is that something, it seems like that's going to be an exercise.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that we have this set for two potential study sessions for you, because we realize that it's quite a long list and a lot of things to think about in considering whether one of these health and safety discretionary permit regulations are appropriate for San Carlos. So, you know, I think for tonight's purpose, it's, I think, an introduction to the subject matter, and what we're looking for from the commission is your take on some of that after reviewing the staff report and hearing the presentation on things you'd like to see included in the, in a future ordinance. And I think the reason, just to touch on this issue of the discretionary law enforcement permit, we're bringing that to the commission even though it's not a zoning ordinance, because it's really part of the comprehensive regime that the city is going to be undertaking. But technically speaking, the planning commission does not have to give a recommendation to the council on the discretionary permit side, but we felt that the city council would want to hear your review of that as well. So it's making it a little bigger project for you to review that part of it, but we think it's important for the process to get, to get a, again, a comprehensive program in the city.
How much of what's before us in this matter, if any, would be applicable to the two existing businesses?
Well, that's, that's really a matter for the planning commission, ultimately the city council, to decide whether you wanted to grandfather those two existing businesses completely or to a partial extent or not at all, and subject them to any of, any new regulation or ordinance that you decided to recommend to the city council for adoption.
And I would just add that on the zoning side, any new zoning ordinance that you proposed to the council, under the law, the existing businesses would be grandfathered from a land use standpoint. So there wouldn't be any new land use regulations that you could impose on an existing legal, legally not, they'd become legally non-conforming at that point. The health and safety ordinance, those are generally applicable to any business, including existing businesses. So I think that's part of what you could do, but there is some discretion about when the effective date is or transition periods, things of that nature. But I think once you make the call, this is my opinion, once you make the call on a, or the council makes the ultimate call on the discretionary law enforcement permit, it generally applies to everyone.
Thank you. To clarify that, of the three options that were laid out for us, number three is a discretionary law enforcement permit, so that would apply to the existing as well as new. Number two, the. Number two, the conditional use permit, which has all the rules that could be imposed on how they were, would that apply to, to the existing ones as well?
No, the, the items on the conditional use permit application, those are the, they have land use entitlements already, so.
For land use.
So we could not impose new requirements under, under a conditional use permit for those businesses.
Thank you.
Do you know if municipalities have the ability to limit what is sold in terms of we, perhaps as an example, that they could sell small handguns, but not AR-15s or military M-16s or bombs?
That's generally an area where the state regulates pretty broadly. What you could do is you could require as a condition of the law enforcement permit that those requirements in state law be followed before you issue the permit.
Thank you. What was the proposed location of the new establishment?
It was over off of industrial way. There's a, a series of small buildings. There's a consignment center right out in front. It's, you know where Starbucks is in the marketplace? It's the next set of buildings to the north. There's the consignment place in the front, and then there's Getz Brothers Sporting Goods area, and there's, there's a golf place now and a shoe store. You know what I'm talking about, those, those, that string of commercial buildings right there? That's where it was proposed in that, in that vicinity there, in those buildings, between Office Depot and the marketplace.
And they withdrawn or decided to not pursue that application, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Would we, what, just as a comment, one of the things that I kind of like about the stores that are there is they're, they're really pretty unobtrusive. They're not like blasting big, huge, you know, signs. And could we put limitations on just the signage around that? I would think that's something that we would have some kind of say over on anything else that comes in, because I think that if we have to have it in, and, you know, I keep talking as if I'm not pro firearm, I have, I'm just playing the advocate right now. But I just, I just wondered if we could have like sign, sign, you know, a sign plan or...
There's a couple of different ways, yeah. The easiest way to do that is when you, if you imposed a conditional use permit, then at that time, you could impose particular size limitations or locational limitations on, on the sign. Another way to do it, a little more sort of complicated, would be to change the sign ordinance for that particular use. And say for gun stores and firearm stores, you can only have X amount of square feet, or it needs to be this kind of sign, that kind of thing.
Okay.
So there's a couple of different routes you can take.
Thank you.
So if I could just recap, or, and please check here. So option, remain as permitted or move to conditional use. Regardless of that, also limit within the footprint of retail within the community sub-areas where this use could be permitted or not. And then the third, the piece of work we're just talking about in terms of the law enforcement permit.
Yes, that's a correct summary, yes.
And in the, in the work done in past, thinking about what areas of the community, if this use were permitted, what that would be appropriate, like what have you done? What guidelines would you give us to think about? Because as you just suggested, a couple of the foot, one of the footprint adult business area, adult oriented business, quite small, cannabis may be a little bit broader, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say that typically cities usually look at what they don't want it to be near. That's one of the first things that communities do. They say, okay, what are our sensitive receptors or, you know, for these types of things? So for instance, a school, a, a single-family residential neighborhood, those might be considered sensitive receptor areas. And so you'd want to have some kind of a buffer zone, a distance away from those, those land uses. So that is one of the first things that you could do. And 600 feet is a number. As you can see, the adult operations are very limited to a very small portion of our community. And I'm not, that was done quite some years ago, but there must have been some thinking about why those particular locations. So you can do that, and that would be one of the first steps.
And it would be fair to note, we have no cannabis business, and we have no adult-oriented business in town.
That's, that's a true statement. So that's one, one option for a starting point. And you kind of asked, well, what are the parameters? So that's, that's probably a good, a good start. The other is to start to think about what kinds of things would be a concern with regard to firearm sales in a particular building. And if you look at certain things like safety and security, you might consider things that the, the community wanted to ensure that the safety and security of that building was intact.
Or run through by a truck.
Right, you don't want it run through by a truck. So bollards, metal steel bollards in the front of the building might be a safety measure. Some kind of video monitoring systems might be something. Hardened areas where they keep the guns, or locked areas where they keep the guns when they're not in use. You can get, and I think, you know, it may even be, I'm, I'm not sure, I saw those kinds of things in, in the data that you got. And some of them, yeah, are probably in there. But you can come up with a whole list of things that you think are appropriate to protect from crime or stealing of those, of those things, or protecting others, and ammunition too, when they take out, how they take out the ammunition, that kind of thing. So we can start to talk about those things.
It would, it would seem to me that having someone from the police to give us a point of view as to what would they worry about at most, what, what would keep them up at night, and therefore, how would we avoid not only their nightmare scenario, but their, the things that might attract criminal activity, that might cause other enforcement problems? So it'd be great to get some of that input, if we could.
And I would just ask, you know, I'm kind of uncomfortable with the superset approach to this. I mean, it's good to see all the options, but as far as actually adopting something, a superset of everything anyone has ever thought of, you know, as in not a typical way to legislate something. The, are there any model examples, or is there any study or view of what a, you know, an, an ideal or model type regulation in this review?
The, the Giffords Law Center, which is located in San Francisco, has assembled what's called a model ordinance. And there are communities, not only in California, but around the United States, that have used that model as a starting point. And that model does have many of the details that I've provided tonight.
I'm sorry, what is the name of that again?
The Giffords Law Center.
Okay. And they call that their model?
It's called their model ordinance.
Model ordinance.
You can find it online, or I'm happy to, to provide it to the, to the planning commission through the city attorney, if you, if you like, whatever, whatever your preference is.
Okay, thank you.
Please do that.
Yes, Chair Bradley, I will.
Okay.
I'm a little confused, as usual. How does the Second Amendment guarantee that people who want to open up a retail firearm business? To me, the Second Amendment guarantees an organized militia, which is like the National Guard. I have trouble even applying it to individuals, but we live with that.
Yes, that was the understanding until 2008, that the Second Amendment protected individuals who participated in a militia. But the Supreme Court in 2008 said the Second Amendment protects a pre-existing right of an individual to possess a firearm for, for self-defense.
Pre-existing right?
Pardon?
Pre-existing right?
Yes, a right that has existed since the founding.
Oh, okay.
That was 2008, did you say?
Yes, that was, the case was called District of Columbia versus Heller, and it was a 2008 Supreme Court decision, U.S. Supreme Court.
And then that right extends to the right to sell, to sell the arms?
Actually, the Ninth Circuit in a, in a 11-judge panel last year in a case challenging Alameda County zoning ordinance, said there is no standalone Second Amendment right to sell firearms. But they did leave the door open to say there may be a Second Amendment right that's tethered to a person's right to possess firearms. So if you have a zoning regime which ends up in operation precluding any firearms establishments at all, that may intrude upon an individual's right to possess a weapon for self-defense, and there may be some component of that with respect to sales, but that's still, that's still an open question. But we know in the Ninth Circuit, there is no independent right of a seller to sell firearms that's untethered from the right of someone to possess them.
What you said is untethered?
And I'm, and I'm using that language from the case, that's, that's a, that's a word from the...
Well, I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is whether the rights are tied together and they have them, or they're disjointed, disconnected.
That's a, there's, 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 there's some nexus there. All the Ninth Circuit was saying is there's no, a firearms seller can't say, I have a Second Amendment right to sell firearms, regardless of who wants to buy them.
Okay.
Really basic question, on package page 55 with the yellow, yellow and red buffer. The yellow area is more than 600 feet from a residence? Is that what that depicts? I'm just surprised that that's, I thought there were some residences closer.
Yeah, that's correct. Single-family residential, yeah.
So what, the yellow is more than 600 feet away from the, from a, from a residence?
That's correct. That's what the yellow represents. The only update that would need to occur would be from Redwood City, residence is school, so it would shift at that southern boundary. But the 600 feet is shown in the orange, and so you see in the east residential neighborhood, and then you go beyond that about 600 feet, and that's where that line is, that the yellow would start. But it's also drawn from El Camino, because you do allow mixed-use residential would be allowed there as well.
Is there any public?
Pardon?
Public comment?
Yes, we'll move to public comment now. Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
I second that motion.
Anyone in support or opposition would like to speak? Would you come up front, please? Good evening.
Joanne Sorrell, just a couple of things. There was a correction on where Turner's was putting in its store. There's actually, that area has turned into a little bit of a children's area. So we have a swimming school, we have a children's laser gun arena. I believe that there's actually a dance studio there too. So this is an area that's, and there's Getz that does all of the sports equipment. So it's not an ideal place for a gun store. That was number one. And as the businesses change, these change, just like in that last example. Let me see, advertising, if there were, would there be any, the question would be, would there be any limitations on the advertising that the gun retailer does? Because we've seen some inserts into the newspaper on a San Mateo gun store that's full advertisement of semi-automatic weapons and billboards, and I don't think San Carlos would, I don't think we would improve our, the look of our city with those kinds of things going on. The hours of operation, Turner's wanted to be open until 11 o'clock at night. Now, why the heck would someone need to buy a gun at 11 o'clock at night? I'd want to see some sort of a, a limitation on the hours of operation. That seemed to be silly to me. A concern that a lot of the people had, first of all, when you look at bringing, we're a desirable city. I've been here for 30 years. It's changed a lot. You have to look at the whole pie. So why look at a certain segment to satisfy those people that want to buy a gun versus three-quarters of the, of the people that live here do not want to see another gun store? They think that it'll bring down the value of the houses, of the homes. We did a, there's been a, a plan with the kind of stores we wanted, and Holly Street applies to that. But the east part of San Carlos has kind of been open. And I don't see, since we're such a desirable city, why we can't choose who we want to come in, who we don't want to come in. If we don't want an Apple store to come in, we're not forced to have an Apple store here. Why are we forced to have a gun store? It just doesn't make sense why we can't choose. If you look, it's not that big of a city. If you, if you look at the number of city per square, you know, miles or per miles, how many people are, you know, where's a gun store? San Mateo? You've got Belmont, Redwood City, San Carlos. You can easily get a gun, if you want to get a gun. I don't know why this city has to have three. That seems a little unbalanced for the amount of people that don't want a gun store. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Okay, discussion?
Close the public hearing first before discussion.
Well, this is just a study session tonight, so we're just looking for input from you on, you know, the, your thoughts, your initial thoughts. And we have scheduled this for another study session. It's a lot to digest, we understood that, that's why we set it for two study sessions. And so any direction you could give us would be helpful for us in kind of starting to get a recommended ordinance together. And, you know, obviously, we've spent a year or so studying this issue, so we, we have a general idea of what an ordinance will look like, but the, the individual pieces is what we're looking for you to help us fill in what you think, again, was, would be most appropriate for San Carlos, and, and what you'd be willing to recommend up to the city council as far as the, the zoning side of it, conditional use permit, zoning restrictions, where they could go, all those types of issues, that's the zoning side. And then the, the health and safety or discretionary police permit, just, you know, the, the types of information that you, you think would be appropriate. And we already, and we heard you that you'd like to hear from the, the chief of police. I think that's actually a very good idea, so we could bring the chief of police back at the, at, for you at the next meeting to, to give you his opinions on, on what he thinks would be appropriate in his world. So again, any kind of input that you could provide for us tonight, we would welcome. And if you feel like you're not ready, and you want to save that, or communicate with staff about some of your thoughts that you've had after you've had a chance to kind of think about it, that's fine too. But, you know, it's sometimes helpful to discuss what, just kind of the things that you maybe can reach a consensus. just kind of the things that you maybe can reach a consensus on that you think, yes, definitely, we want that in the, that might be a good place to start, so.
Well, I have some things that I'd like consideration, I don't know if we have to agree on them or not, but the signage is something that I'm very interested in, and advertising. I'm very interested in if there's anything to prevent us from limiting the number of gun shops in town or not. Very big interest in the building safety, because we did have a truck that ran through the front of one of our gun stores, and there was, there were guns and everything that were stolen, so the different types of building safety that are available in the perimeter, and also the, the building itself. More information on the special permit process, I'm, I'm going to look up the Giffords Law Center, but I think it'd be interesting if we had more, a little bit more on that, as far as like best recommendations that maybe staff thinks would be good for the city. And then if there is any way to limit, if, or I don't know if we would want to or not, but if there is any way to limit the types of firearms that are sold, so those are the ones that I have that I'd like more information on.
Yeah, I would just say as a, as a threshold, yeah, it's surprising that, you know, we've decided to specifically regulate different types of businesses, and then, you know, we discovered recently we had no thoughts on firearm-related businesses, so, you know, I think this is a good exercise and one that the city wants us to undertake, so just as a, as a, as a first instance, I think, yes, this is a good exercise we're undertaking. Is there a general agreement on that, on the commission?
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I think the thing that stands out is that actually, any new firearm weapon establishment wouldn't be covered by a conditional use permit, that just seems to me like a, an important, basic thing that, that we should have. If we do, you know, if one were to go out, even if we were limited to, if one were to go out, another one wanted to come in, the planning commission should review, and it should be open to public, public opinion. So, yes, absolutely, good thing to do, and conditional use permit, to me, seems like some basic piece of regulation or legislation we should have.
I believe that it'd be--
I'm sorry, go ahead. So I'm surprised this place isn't packed, because I, I watched the city council meeting where it first came up, and it was really heated, and a lot of people were in here, so I, I think as we get closer, we'll probably, probably see that pick up again, but also sort of brings me to how we notify the city of these planning sessions? Have we used the same kind of rigor and discipline that we did with the zoning, and if not, can we?
Well, we--
Or do we not want to?
Yeah, I mean, it goes out on social media and, and that kind of thing, and we do the normal required notification for the planning commission meeting. But I think you're right, I guess as we move forward and you start to, you know, get closer to some ideas that you want to pursue, then we would try to use some other formats and methods to get the word out, but we do try to get, you know, use all our forms of media to get the word out. Now, we did have two very well-attended community meetings, and so, and it was noted that the planning commission and city council will be considering the remarks that were made at those community meetings, so people did have a, quite a, you know, a robust discussion about their issues, and so we had a lot of public comment on, at those meetings. So we'll, we'll think about that for the next meeting.
And I can add that the city council just extended the urgency ordinance at its meeting on the 22nd of October, and in the staff report at that meeting, we had a detailed agenda of all the, all the, the schedule of, of review of the process of getting, bringing these, bringing any proposed ordinances forward, and included on that was the two potential study sessions at the planning commission. So not only did we provide notice of this meeting as were required, put it on the website and posting the agenda, but it was also on, in a city council staff report for the October 22nd meeting, so it's been, this meeting has been out there that we were going to be undertaking this for over two weeks.
I agree that this should be under the purview of the planning commission, but how we calibrate our, the strength of our, of our judgment calls, I think we'd want to be based on community sentiment. So I feel like I have a homework assignment to kind of understand where the community stands so that, so that I can advocate for, for not only my personal thoughts, beliefs about guns, but, but represent the broader community. So I guess I could go back and look at the record for those community meetings, I understand there was a survey, is, are those results part of that record, or?
Is that what?
I believe so.
Can, can you say to the, on six, six EA, or sorry, packet page 49, is, or should we use those as a cue for the kind of dialogue, the give and take, or that was, that came from the, the two meetings? Does this do a pretty good job of capturing everything?
Yes, we did include the questions and answers from the two meetings, they're summarized, so you don't have every single comment, but if you go on the city of San Carlos website, and we can forward this link to you, we have a page titled firearm regulations. It has the dates of all the community engagement, the next steps, it has a link to the Q and A that you've received, it has a link to the Shape San Carlos survey, and then it has the two different meetings, their videos, so you can watch them there. So they're all on the city's website, we can give you that link directly.
Thank you, Lisa.
The model ordinance that you mentioned, I think would be very helpful if we could each get a copy of that before our next study session.
I'll make sure you get that in the next couple of days.
Great.
And does the model include the, the police permit recommendation?
It does, yes.
It does, okay. And, and that's a sort of where I'm at on this, I mean, I think this is a good activity for us to undertake, but, you know, you know, this is going to require a lot of staff work. I mean, I really do think we're not the appropriate body to boil down a superset of everything that's been thought of in this area. So I would personally, and interested in how the other commissioners would react to this, but I would recommend that staff review that model ordinance, and really digest that, understand if there's anything from this superset that the model maybe didn't get into that makes sense, and, and perhaps add that, and, and then consider some of the other things that it probably doesn't have that would relate more specifically to San Carlos, like geographic restrictions, advertisement restrictions, hours of operation, and if we want to consider a cap of three or something gun stores in town, and, you know, and I would think the next study session, we should get some kind of synthesis that, you know, and whether it's cycling with the city police, or the sheriff, or whether cycling it with our existing gun businesses, but kind of get us to something that, you know, is a bit more boiled down, I think would be my direction on this.
Yeah, you mentioned the actual businesses, I'd actually like to hear from them, too. I'd like to hear what they--
And we have at the community meetings.
Okay, okay.
A representative from Inbert and Smithers, was there not the other individual retailer, but the owner of Inbert and Smithers did make some comments at those meetings, and those are on the videos.
Okay, all right.
And they've been in business here like 50 years, right?
Yeah, yeah, for a while, since the early 70s, is my understanding.
Do you know about the other one? Is it long tenure, too?
I--
It's fairly new, but it's an appointment basis only, so it's not, it doesn't have a retail frontage.
Thank you.
As we think about limiting locations, you know, I'd be interested to what my fellow commissioners think, but, you know, the idea of not being near a school, I think, you know, that, okay, tick that, that's very clear. Another one that strikes me is, I don't think I'd want, like, close proximity to a place that sells alcohol, or certainly that serves alcohol, right? So, you know, we've got a lot of places now that are, we, matter of fact, we just approved a sign for a brew pub. I would think that not being near a place that sold or, you know, you could consume alcohol on-site would be good. If we went through a list of businesses that we didn't want to be near, I wonder, actually, if there are still pockets of retail space that are left, and, and again, how, how might we think about that, right? So not near school, not near children's playground or retail activities, or that predominantly attract children, and alcohol would be three on my list, but love to hear what, what you all think in addition.
I would agree with that, I certainly would add houses of worship. We've seen mass terrorist murdering of people while they're worshiping in their, in their religious facilities across the country. I would, to change the subject, I'd refer to this adult business, oriented businesses. The map is, these are the only two sites that show up that would actually work according to that, and that's six, no, that's the 1,000-feet map, 1,000 feet from any of those land uses that you and I mentioned, so it, it'll be limited.
That map is not strictly 1,000-foot, that's one of the parameters, there's other parameters as well. Some of those properties are zone-plan community, and they don't allow those, so there's some other parameters in that map.
I would just say that as, as we get into this, you know, this is obviously a tough national issue, and one that is not often before a planning commission. So that being said, I would just say, you know, my personal belief in good government is it just needs to be an exercise of transparency and integrity, so, I mean, if we want to as a community get to the point where we want to just say, "We don't want gun stores," then we should stand up and say, "We don't want gun stores and ban them." But what I, what I personally don't support is just creating a regime where we're down to one little box that is probably on a creek or something and could never be developed anyway, you know, because that just isn't, you know, that, that's not a process with integrity. And if we really did get into it, and I understand, you know, these things make sense, boy, why should, why would we want one next to a school, or, but, you know, it's, all that can be discussed in the sense that, no, you can't walk into a gun store and walk out with one, right? I mean, so there's waiting periods, and, you know, all this has been hashed out many times over by lots of government agencies, but, you know, I would just want us, you know, if, if we do think the community's saying, "We don't want to have gun stores," then we should bite the bullet and go for a ban. Or if we don't think that's right, well, then we should develop some rational, safety-conscious, good regulation that, that makes sense, and that's how I think about government in general.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we need to close the study session?
No, we're, we're just going to, the, the next scheduled study session is for November 19th, that's two weeks from tonight, and you've given us some homework to do, and we'll get you the information that you've requested to prepare for that, and after that study session, that's again a study session, so the, the next time you see it after that study session will be an ordinance, a draft ordinance or ordinances for your review. So, again, just another study session to get public input and, and kind of focus your direction to us and to help us in drafting the ordinance.
I would just chime in to say, one reason why we might not have a lot of people here tonight is we might have worn them out. We've had community meetings on this, we've had city council measures about this, you know, and they're probably just worn out, or not, you know, thinking about what the next step might be.
Stoney ordinances that we just went through.
Exactly, and that, too. So I, I guess, I would just ask, so the city has heard from the public through these different venues, is there a recommendation on how we can best get up to speed on that? Should we just watch videos? Were those taped meetings? Or should you guys summarize kind of the public input to this point? I don't want to frustrate the public by requiring that they all now come and talk to us on all the things they've already talked to us about.
Yeah, so we did summarize the questions in your staff report, so those are a summary, but I think that, and Lisa Costa-Sanders mentioned, on the website, there are videos, and, you know, if it was me, I would probably take a look and, and see what people are saying on both sides of the issue, just to see the, you know, the, the scope of the dialogue. So that couldn't hurt, I would suggest that you go and spend a few minutes and take a look at some of those videos, yeah.
I found the questions--
The emotion behind it, too, I mean, those, those meetings, there's a lot of emotion, a lot of things behind.
I found the questions really useful, but they didn't kind of give me the weight of the number of people on the different, offering the different perspectives.
You know, I'm not sure that we took the numbers, but I would say that if you watch the videos, you'll see where it kind of weighs out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there also are videos, if you go through the website, the agenda part of the, of the website, and look at the city council meetings from about a year ago, when this issue first came up, there were a lot of, there was a great deal of public comment during those meetings, and actually more, in my recollection, more than we had at the study sessions where people came out in support of the moratorium about, about a year ago, so.
So did the city council come up with a, an approach or strategy based on the input they received? I mean, so could they be telling the planning commission, "We would like to constrain gun sales as much as possible, find good mechanisms to do that," or are they just saying, come up of something from the ground up?
I think the latter is the answer, the council has not given specific direction, but the council, obviously, in setting up this program and asking staff and the commission to study it, is very interested in, in what the commission comes up with, and remember, you're going to be a recommending body in, in this, so the council's ultimately going to see the work that the community did, the work that you did, and ultimately, you know, consider ordinances for approval on, both on the zoning side and the discretionary police permit and health and safety side. So I don't think we really have, I mean, the, the process is designed to come, the process we came up with is designed to get the broad-based community views, and that's why we had the, the town hall meetings, to get that information to help inform you of, where the community's interest is in this, in the regulation. And then special counsel, my job is to give you the legal parameters of what you can do in this area of the law, it's very complicated, as you might imagine, and then we're going to bring the benefit of other cities' experiences, and that's going to be part of what you're going to see in the future, but at this stage, we're just, let's be, our, our thoughts where we want to get just this general, your general thoughts about what you would like to see, and that'll help us bring forward ordinances for you to, for you to review. So it's, I know it seems like a long process, but just in our experience, a complicated community-based issue like this, getting the benefit of the public's input and the planning commission's input, I think really will help the council make a decision that's best for the community.
And the majority of the council will be new?
That, that's very true, so we have a council that was not at all those meetings, so they're going to be, I'm sure, looking, if they haven't already, looked at some of the tapes and some of the thinking that's already been going on.
There are no further comments, we'll move ahead to reports, correspondence, general information. City Council-- City council actions.
Oh, certainly. How can I forget? On the RS6 development standards, I believe it was the October 22nd city council meeting where the city council introduced their recommendations for changes to the RS6. We sent out an announcement on what those changes were. I hope the commission did receive those. If not, let me know and I can pass that along. But most of the recommendations that the planning commission made were supported by the council with some minor alterations. Those recommendations or that ordinance that was introduced on the 22nd, we'll need to come back to the city council and we'll do so on Tuesday, November the 13th. And that is when we expect final adoption to occur. And just for the record, I wanted to add that while those changes will become, will go into effect or be codified in the code 30 days after the second hearing, the council did direct that they would not be enforceable until 180 days after the second reading, which puts us somewhere around March, May 12th, excuse me, May 12th, when those new standards would become enforceable. So that is an update on all of that effort that we've been making on the RS6 development standards. And I don't have anything else? No, nothing else this evening.
Any comments from planning commission members?
Yes, actually, I do. I just wanted to report back to the commission. I attended a meeting with Jackie Speer and Matthew Desmond, who is the author of the book Invicted. And basically, the discussion was on affordable housing and, and not specific to this geographic area, but in general. And, you know, basically, it was commissioners and council members that were in the meeting. And a lot of the things we've talked to, talked about has already came up. But one of the things they did say, a solution that we're already doing, is an NLO fee. And the other thing that came out of it is the general consensus of the group that was in the room with me was that this has got to be more like a regional, you know, adjusting affordable housing is probably going to need to be more of a regional answer than just a city-by-city answer. So I don't know how, what that means going forward, but that was some of the discussion that happened in that meeting with Jackie and Matthew Desmond. So it was very, very interesting, so I'd pass that on.
I just wanted to report back, we had a successful RDRC meeting this afternoon. So we were reviewing a house on Cedar Street at the prior RDRC meeting, which had generated a lot of concern. And it is a large house on a large lot, right in line with what we've spent a couple months thinking about. And I would just report the process worked. We continued it because it felt like, in the prior meeting, the, the neighbors and the owners hadn't really been communicating well with each other. And good progress was made between the meetings. And when they came back for the meeting today, a lot of adjustments to the, to the design pleased the neighbors. And it was a successful process, so I just wanted to report that back.
Good. That's always nice to hear, when it works. John and I also attended for a couple of months the Citizens Academy, and I would recommend and there'll be more classes in the spring. The schedule's out. They meet one night a week for two months. And Planning and Economic Development were two weeks presented, Al and Lisa, Lisa, the several members of the staff did an excellent job. And I got to learn a lot of new things about public works and parks and recreation, transportation, all the branches of local government represented. And I would recommend it to anyone. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, and just the last item on the agenda regarding staff comments and reports. I'd just like to briefly talk about the calendar going forward to the close of the year. So the next regular meeting is on November the 19th, and we just heard earlier this evening that there will be a second study session on looking at regulations for firearms and ammunition. That is the only item that we have on the agenda for the 19th, so I just wanted to mention that. And then for the next regular meeting on December the 3rd, I just wanted to note that there are two commissioners that have informed me that they will not be able to attend, and that's Commissioner Roof and Ike Pony. So because we're down two, we need to make sure that we have three in order to have a meeting. It looks like there may be some, a couple of items going forward, but it's hard to tell at this point. So just, just let me know if you think that you may not be able to attend it, and then we can just adjust ourselves and schedules accordingly. But as of this point, we won't have two on December 3rd, so just to let the rest of the commissioners know. And then the last meeting this year is on the 17th, so we expect to have that meeting move forward if we have items to bring forward to the commission. And as of now, that is the only update that I have for the commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. If you haven't already voted, please exercise your democratic responsibility. The country needs it. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you for attending.